The City Council Committee on Ordnance, Licenses, and Legal Affairs will meet in person on Thursday, August 14, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. for the purpose of discussing claims. This meeting will be held in City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, Salem, Massachusetts, second floor. All right, we're going to go through as many claims as we can over the next hour here. Hopefully, we can get through all of them. We have Beth Renard with us here, and I'm, I have, this is the second time, I've forgotten your name, I'm so sorry.
Sam Mustafa.
Sam Mustafa. So I guess we can, Beth, do you have a preference how you want to start, or Sam, do you have a preference for how you want to start here?
So if we could start with Sam.
Perfect.
Number 119.
Oh, I'm sorry. With us here in the committee, we have, we have Counselor Cohen from the committee, Counselor Morcello, and myself, absent, we have Counselor Varela and Counselor Juricello. Nobody from the committee of the whole, surprisingly. Okay, number 119. Daniel Meakin.
This is concerning 10 Porter Street Condo Trust. Condo Association received a bill on October 3, 2024, where they had replacement usage of over 58,000 cubic feet. They reached out to us about this high bill, and we informed them that they had been getting estimated bills. The past four bills, quarterly bills, had been estimated. When the meter technician was there in August of 2024, he photographed everything, the meter, and it showed that they had been under billed for 58,000 cubic feet of water. At first, they stated that the meter must be faulty. I advised them that the meter is not faulty, these are mechanical meters, they only turn when water goes through them, and I advised them that, as they, as we were discussing it, there was still high usage that was ongoing. I showed them like the reports that we had for the daily and hourly usage, and that usage went on, so they were notified, they got a bill, and they were notified in October, and that went all the way through December 2024, when the usage actually went down to about 3,000 cubic feet. I advised them to file for an abatement, and they did so in December. Our policy is that, with regards to abatement, that they must file within 30 days, and the abatement applies only to 50% of the sewer charge if they can prove that, if there is evidence that this water did not go in our sewer. So the city pays for the water, and we also pay for the water that goes in our sewer to treat it. So if there is evidence, and we have photo and a bill that maybe the water did not end up in our sewer, we grant up to, the maximum is 50% of the sewer charge on that bill. They didn't, they weren't able to provide that. I was able, however, to grant them a partial abatement, because when the meter was, went offline, that was in fiscal year 20, fiscal year '23. Hold on, don't want to mess it up. No, apologies. So it was, the sewer rates were in fiscal year '24, so when the replacement went, it was in fiscal year '25, so the difference of $347. So since we cannot pinpoint where the usage, the over-usage occurred, we revert to the lowest possible rates. So we assume that it happened in the earliest period, and so we were, there was an abatement that was approved by Finance at $347.11 that was credited to the condo association. So it was partially approved, but not for all of it. The condo association claimed that they were not notified in time, but each bill has a box up top that states, if you have received a system estimate, E or T code, that please call the Water Department. So every single bill is considered notice, like it's, it's considered that they received a notice. And even after they were notified, with, they received the bill in October, then they still, the usage went for another two months. So they, they received the notice, there was some confusion between E and T code, these are both codes for estimates. So before I became, like I was hired as a water registrar, they would use a T code because they could manually enter, depending on the previous, like, so if it was a fall bill, like in September, they would look at last year's bill, whereas after that, we decided then there was an ordinance to just use 12 previous periods, and it would, the system would automatically generate an estimate based on the 12 previous periods. So T and E codes are interchangeable, it's not that we manually go in. The usage was about, the monthly usage was over 10,000 cubic feet, and that was their estimated bill, was for about the same amount. So just extrapolating from the data, it was probably about like eight months of this high usage, like over 10,000 or 11,000 cubic feet. So, and I explained that to them, it's about January that it happened, and we were never notified of, like, when it was fixed in December, like what happened, what was the source. But it's been our policy, it's never, we have never abated for leaks or overconsumptions just because it was unexpected, it was more than usual. The city pays for it, we have never granted an abatement when we can prove that this was actual usage.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair. To you, to Mr. Mustafa. I have a couple of quick questions. One, the, when you realized that the, there was a leak in the meter reader, you can't tell how much water leaked, correct? So you're looking, if I got this right, you're looking at historic data to see if, you know, two years ago, a year ago, whatever, was similar in consumption?
Let's see if I understand it correctly. So when we're referring to leaks, it's, I don't want to use that term, it's just, there's overconsumption. So we look at like average data, so this condo association, on average, does about 3,000 cubic feet each month.
Okay.
Okay? So now, when you look at the months in question, it goes up to 10,000.
So the estimate, once you got the new meter in, the estimate showed that, I mean, the actual reading showed that the estimates were pretty accurate, or close to what they were?
Yeah, the estimates were between, so 9,500, 8,000, so it was close to what their consumption is right now, so based on these data, I would say estimates were a little bit lower, like, there was two estimates that were for 8,8780, but one was for 10,000, one was over 95. So on average, they were about 3,000. So the estimates were actually right on, it's just, there is no way to tell.
No, I understand. So I think what bothers me a little bit is that the complainant is asserting that this leak, that they call it a leak, I know it, it was just a defective meter, but call it a leak, that the city, they're accusing the city of being aware and concealing this for 10 months, which my assumption is that as soon as you're aware that there's any kind of defect, that you're out there addressing the defect, correct?
Yeah, ideally, we want to address these meters as soon as possible. So right now, it's about 10% of our meters are getting estimated reads, and they could be for a number of reasons. The wire, the little transponder, the MIU could be, needs to be replaced, the meter itself, the register head, so there are several components that could fail. And sometimes it's actually, there is a disruption in the signal or the collector, so we actually, we may even get like fake estimates. So the meter is working fine, it's just there is a disruption in the signal, and it will automatically bring it in as an estimate. But then it will catch up, like the next month, so if...
I mean, my point was that you're not intentionally concealing a defect and not addressing it as soon as you know that there's a defect.
No, it's not possible for us to conceal it, and nor do we want to conceal it. We want the residents to pay exactly for the water that they used, and in the bill, it has a code, A is for actual, and T or E are for estimates. And there is a warning on top of the bill that says, if you get this code, E or T, please call us to schedule an appointment. So it's not uncommon that people, it will go for quarters, and sometimes even years, that they will not call, and the estimates, they're never right on, but for most of the time, they're, they're very close. And sometimes we actually end up giving people credit, like, they might, the estimates, maybe people moved out, there's less water being used. We try to get as close as possible, we would never conceal it, and they, they could come in, and since May of this year, we actually have a consumer, like the resident portal, when they can log in and they have access to the same data that we have, which gets updated hourly, so they can look and they can even put like, they can put alerts to say, if I go above this amount, please let me know, or if they're away, and they want to know if there is any water running, they can get an alert, and it's available 24/7 at no charge.
May I, Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, from September of '23 to September of '24, they were getting estimated readings, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then the MIU was replaced, it was repaired, in the fall of 2024, right?
Correct.
Okay. Then in September, October, November of 2024, they had higher-than-normal readings, 11,000 cubic feet, right?
Correct.
Sometime in November, between November and December, there was a repair that was made somewhere to a leak, and those, the usage went down to about 3,200 cubic feet, correct?
Correct.
And it has continued that way since December of 2024?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. So the city's position is that they had actual readings, not actual readings, they had estimated readings for a year, had noticed on the bills that there were estimated readings. When they finally got, got notice of this, they did some work to make sure that that, whatever that leak was, was corrected, and it has been corrected since December of 2024. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So they're looking for the city to have, to claim responsibility for not notifying them earlier of this potential leak. We had no way of knowing that because the readings were estimated. We didn't get into the building, they, you know, we didn't have actual readings to know that there was that much water was going out of the building. Correct?
That's correct. So the technician was there in August, and he would not know, he just photographs everything and, and fixed the little transponder unit called MIU, Meter Interface Unit. The update, the final update was done in September, and then the October bill, the, went out on, we did the, the bill run September '24, and they were mailed out, the bill went out October 3. So they would have received it like that first week of October.
Counselor Morcello.
Thank you, Chair. There's a lot here that, you know, I've had the same issue with a constituent of mine also that had a leak. How did you, I missed the explanation for the abatement, the $300 abatement. What does that represent?
Okay, so every fiscal year, we have different rates, so the rates for this year went into effect July 1. This is fiscal year '26. So if you have, in this case, we started getting bills that were estimated in fiscal year '24, so they got actual bills, it was like actually, September '23 was, I'm sorry, yeah, September '23 was the first time that they got estimated bills.
So what's the difference in the rates between the two?
Yeah, so if we don't know where that overage occurred, because it could have been in September, right? It's most likely it happened January till August. If, if there is about 7,000 cubic feet of water that they use over their, above their average, their normal, so they're at like 33,000, 3,200, so if you do 7,000, 58 divided by seven, you're looking at about eight months, but we are not sure when that overconsumption occurred. So it could have occurred, right, that first month that it went offline? So we err on the side of the resident. Are we going to assume that that happened during, we're going to charge them the lowest rate that we can?
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
How come when the bill is an estimate, it's not clear on the bill that it's an estimate? Because it really isn't, in my mind. There's like a little, a little letter there that you need to understand, right? There's not a big red box on the top saying, this is an estimated bill.
Yeah. We should, I mean, it has the code, and there is the box with, you know, it's bolded around, but I suppose we could make it more...
Yeah.
Yes, yes. We could make it more prominent, but it's been like that for...
Put it in red.
So it's the top right corner.
Top right corner where it says, if you receive the system estimate, E, read code. Where does the, where does, where does it show that the E read code is?
So if you look at the bill where it says like the actual reads, like you say, previous, current read, and then there's a code that's A or E or T, so A's for actual...
Oh, this is not an actual bill that...
No, that is their bill. This is the bill that they got.
With an, as an estimate?
No, that was with an actual...
Okay, so the A here is saying this is the actual...
That is an actual, so this is after the meter was fixed, and they have an A code, and in the back of the bill, it tells them, it's like the codes, the explanations. I mean, it's, I've looked at some other towns, their bills, and they're very similar, but we can certainly look into like redesigning it, that's...
I mean, listen, if it's simple to make that E, if it's an estimate, in red, like, there's got to be something on here that draws their attention. I mean, I don't think I'm the only one that gets to bill paying day and just goes through and pays all the bills, right?
Yeah.
Like, and if it looks like it's about right, yeah. That's one thing. I, I don't know why the engineering department doesn't get reports of meters that continuously are not read properly.
No, we, we do have reports, it's just the problem is that it's, so the meters is, this is an aged fleet, these meters have about, they have a 20-year life cycle, their warranty is about 10-year, 100%, the other 10 years is, is prorated, so it's, it's less and less. So we're getting to that life cycle, we do have reports, there is one technician on staff, and there is a limit to how many meters we can fix in one week, so he will need, in one appointment, for example, he is about an hour and a half, and there's going to be like a little bit of lead time for him to travel to another location. So we're looking at like three appointments a day, and at most, we're looking at about 12 to 15 appointments a week. So when you look at, we have about 1,200 meters that need to be serviced, is, is a lot, and, you know, we book our technician, sometimes two, three weeks in advance. With these meters, it's, yeah, it's an issue when there is overconsumption, but if, for example, there is no, like, we cannot be held, like, the city cannot be held responsible for like overconsumption. Like, if somebody's using water, that water went through the meter, that's the only way that meter will turn, it's up to the residents to kind of monitor and make sure that they're doing it.
What I'm having a problem with is that the city knew for four bills that this meter wasn't being read correctly.
Yeah.
Right? And that's what caused the problem. Like, we don't know when the leak started. These homeowners, you know, if you really don't know that there's a leak in your house, which was my constituents' issue, you don't know until you get the bill that's huge, right? And so these guys, it was a year. And I'm not saying that, you know, I'm just saying, we need to do, there's got to be something we can do better.
Yeah.
For a year, this went on, like with, how many, how many customers do you think have gone a year with estimated bills?
I don't have the data, but there is about 10% of the meters, even with us fixing, has been, in the year and a half I've been with the city, it's, that figure stays about the same, because as we fix them, other meters, you know, these are, they can malfunction for a number of reasons, and so it's...
So we could be sitting on a huge problem here, as far as residents are concerned, where the meter gets fixed, and then all of a sudden, they've got a $10,000 bill, right?
Yeah. So the overconsumption reports, in this case, would not have helped, but as far as the city, with this particular case, it would not have helped, because we were not getting actual reads. So for the meters that are working, and now we can see there's some overconsumption going on, so it needs to be at least four months of data that we can, and it will trigger. And after a while, if it sees like this is normal consumption, it will fall off. So with the meters that are not working, it's, it's a work in progress, but we do have the portal now, the residents can log in, and they can see and monitor and send alerts to themselves, and it's very user-friendly. And we have, since we launched it, several hundred people that have signed up, and so...
That's not 10%, though, I bet, right?
What's that?
But that's not 10% of...
No, no, not, not 10%, but in every bill now, we have the link with information on how to create an account, it's very easy, very user-friendly, and we send mailers last fiscal year, and we're going to send mailers again, like inserts with the bills, we send them with District A, I believe, so we're going to send the other two districts and monthly's.
Just to add, if I may, we have a lot of estimated bills, it sounds like, but not all of them have a leak that they don't know about, right?
I mean, agreed, but some of them could, which they just don't know about, yeah. Or their water usage changed during that time, I, you know...
Counselor Cohen.
Okay, a couple of things. So I was on the Sustainability Committee when Chair Hayes, at the time, freaked out about the water bills, and they've actually improved a lot. However, having been in the solar business and tried to explain a National Grid bill to a consumer, people don't look at the bill, just like Counselor Morcello said. If their bill was $100, and then they get a bill for 105 or 90, they just pay the bill. In my mind, the only fair thing regarding this particular complaint is, when we actually read the meter correctly, when we had a good meter and read it correctly, did it balance out with the estimated bills? Was it, you know, 10%, 15% higher, lower, whatever? And that, to me, is the only way, if you think about the way all bills are, like, every gas and electric bill has 13 months' usage, so if you look at the bill, you, but no one looks at those things. There's a chart. If you look at the chart, you'll be like, oh my God, I've been, you know, using 500 kilowatt-hours, and all of a sudden, I'm being charged for 1,000 kilowatt-hours. So I'm, I'm not blaming the customer, I'm actually not blaming the city, I just think as a, a body that's trying to decide what's fair, is if the estimated consumption was similar, because the leak or the defect may have been going on for an extended period, but may not have accounted for that much. You know what I mean? Like, when I look at your chart over there that you are holding up, if you just had what was before the estimate compared to what is when you have the actual bill, you can get somewhat of a historical comparison, that's kind of what I was looking for. Because I can't, like, there's no way, I mean, even if we have something flashing, if they press on the bill and it shocks them when they have an estimated bill, they're not necessarily going to do something about it, only if they see something dramatically different. And they didn't see anything dramatically different, because they were getting an estimated bill that was the same every quarter.
So the whole point of doing the estimates is so we can get as close as we can to the actual usage? Because if we do, like, we, we actually had this discussion, so if we were, for example, to send a high bill, so if their average is, let's just say, 10,000 cubic feet a quarter, and we decide, okay, we need to get their attention, because there's been two quarters now that have gotten estimated bills, and we send them double the bill, hopefully, they'll call us.
No, I understand, Mr. Mustafa, I'm just going to interrupt you for a second. All I'm saying is, is if we could see the last time it wasn't estimated versus the first time it was actual, where you knew that the MIU was not defective, you would have two readings that you would be able to compare. That's what I'm saying.
May I? It might be helpful to leave this in committee, Sam has a lot of data that we can share. Might make it helpful just to look at the graphs, look at the outline.
Yeah, I think that we're, we are halfway through the meeting right now, so I think there was probably a few things that are going to stay in committee here, and then we can try to take this up again as like a, as a secondary meeting. Any further questions on this, on number 119? The recommendation is to leave this in committee.
Okay.
Is that the recommendation on your side? I'm sorry.
Right, I, there's a lot of questions, and I think there, there are graphs, there are timelines that I have that might be helpful in your deliberations.
Motion to keep this in committee?
Motion by Counselor Morcello to leave in committee, second by Counselor Cohen, all those in favor. I see three hands, including my own. This is staying in committee. All right, where do we want to go next?
449.
All right.
This is a claim from Brian Hennessey, driving down...
Thank you, Sam.
Drove over a sewer cover, and this was referred to the contractor McKay.
Was there any, were there any reports previously of any of this issue?
That I'm aware of.
Okay. Counselor Morcello.
Motion to deny and refer to McKay.
Counselor Morcello moves to deny and refer to McKay Construction, second by Counselor Cohen, all those in favor. I see three hands, including my own. This is denied.
225, I'm recommending that that one stay in committee. I do need to get data from the Parking and Traffic Department about whether or not there was a hearing on that, so we weren't able to get that data for several of the tickets this week, so I'm recommending that stay in committee.
Motion to keep in committee?
Can I just ask where this was at, this, this situation? This is at...
Hancock Street.
Hancock Street.
I can see it from...
Sure, you can. Counselor Morcello moves to leave in committee, second by Counselor Cohen, all those in favor. Three hands, including my own, stays in committee.
Number 274, recommending that this one be referred to National Water Main.
Did we skip the discharge?
Oops, sorry. Yes, I did. Number 273, recommend that that be discharged because Maya paid this claim.
Motion to discharge.
Counselor Morcello moves to discharge, second by Counselor Cohen, all those in favor. I see three hands, including my own, discharged.
All right. The next one, recommending that this one be referred to National Water Main. This was an issue where there was a cleaning maintenance being done on the sewer line on Laurier, and it allegedly caused an injection pump to fail.
And what was the reason for the recommendation for denial?
That it was not the responsibility of the city, that it be referred to the contractor that was actually doing the work, was insured for the...
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair. Move that we deny and refer to National Water Main.
Second.
The next one...
All those, motion by Counselor Cohen to deny and refer to National Water Main, second by Counselor Morcello, all those in favor. I see three hands, including my own. It is... It is denied.
The next one is number 92. This is Rachel Lutz. White paint came up from the bottom, um, and hit her car. Uh, there were lines being painted, um, the insurance, this was sent to the insurance company, and there was no notice of defect with this. She is looking for $400.
Do we know what the lines were? Were this, were these crosswalk lines or side of the road lines?
Give me one second. One, two. So all I have here, unfortunately, Joanne has been out sick, so I didn't have the actual claim, but all I have here is the denial letter to Ms. Lutz saying that there was no notice of defect. Uh, our investigation has revealed National Grid has jurisdiction over the construction on Orange Street. They were responsible for a signage around the painted area for the construction. So there was National Grid work going on, and there was a painted area around a construction site. Could certainly refer this one to National Grid.
I wasn't aware that National Grid did line painting, though.
I wasn't either.
That's my only concern here. I don't know what really is.
Well, I'll leave this one in committee, and I'll look at it further.
Motion to keep in committee.
Counselor Murcell moves to leave in committee. Counselor, second by Counselor Cohen. All is in favor? See three hands, including my own. We're leaving committee.
Okay, now we have number 173. This is a, um, rare porch rail was ripped off and damaged when hit by a plow truck. Now, the insurance company looked at this one and denied it because there was insufficient evidence that it was a City of Salem truck.
Did they give any additional details to why it was, why, like, what evidence was supplied?
Uh, there was, according to the insurance company, there was no, was no evidence. Vehicle was damaged, your property has not been identified. A review of our members' records show no report, this is through the DPW, no report of any member of their vehicles causing this damage or being in this area.
Questions or motions in the council, in the committee? Counselor Murcell.
Um, so DPW is saying that no one reported that they hit this port?
Yeah, so what happens when we get a claim, Ray gets a sheet from Maya. Was there anybody in the area, any of your city plows? He will look at his log and say, "No, we weren't in that area. We didn't have a city plow there." It could have been a contractor, it could have been a...
Contractor for the city?
It may have been. I can ask Ray to look. This happened on...
So then, if that's the case, is it the city's responsibility or is it the contractor's?
The contractor's responsibility.
So wouldn't Ray know what contractor is assigned to that street?
He would. I'll have to go back and pull. I'm a little, don't have a lot of my information because Joanne called out sick today, so...
Um, motion to keep this in committee.
Motion to leave in committee from Counselor Murcell. Second by Counselor Cohen. All is in favor? Three hands, including my own. We leave in committee.
All right, now we have number 172. Um, this is a long one. Parked a car on the public way and didn't have any signs, she alleges. Um, there was damage from a tree that fell on her car, and Maya investigated it through the Tree Department, and they found that there was no notice of a defect of the tree, and there were no signs of obvious decay, rot, or death on the tree, according to the report from the, the, um, Tree Department. And the date of loss was February 28th, 2025.
Does the meaning behind the "no signs were posted," do they mean signs about the tree?
That there was a hazardous tree.
Oh, is that a thing, that's not a thing we do, right?
That's what the claimant...
There's not, we don't post signs that say hazardous tree? Okay.
And there was no C Click fix for a tree inspection?
That's the first thing they check.
Okay.
So no evidence that there was any issue with that specific tree?
Right.
Okay. Any motions?
Move to deny.
Counselor Murcell moves to deny. Second by Counselor Cohen. All those in favor? See three hands, including my own. We deny. Number 196.
196.
This is John Moon. Popped front tire, right side, in Vannen Square.
Right, so this one is number 196. John Moon, um, popped front tire, right side, in Vannen Square. Maya paid this one.
Motion to discharge.
Some discharge from Counselor Murcell. Second by Counselor Cohen. All is in favor? See three hands, plus my own. Discharged.
Recommend discharge of the next one. Maya paid this pothole on Swambskett Road.
Move to discharge.
Counselor Murcell moves to discharge. Second by Counselor Cohen. All is in favor? See three hands, including my own.
Um, the next one is, I recommend keeping in committee. Again, we're looking to get the backup data from the Parking Department.
Move to keep in committee.
Just real quick on this one, because I know she's been emailing frequently on this issue. Um, what is our typical process here when they, when they're unable to get, uh, payment from the contractor? In this, in this case, I believe the contractor called the police to tow a vehicle an hour before the sign said, is that correct?
That's what she's alleging, yeah.
What is our, I know in the past, we've had that process where the contractor has an issue paying and, or not being responsive, and the city pays the claim, and then the city bills the contractor. Do we have a, like a set operating procedure on how we do that kind of thing?
We could pay the claim, and then Ray would deduct it from the invoice, the next invoice. We'd do that here. Because she did pay the full amount.
Yeah.
She paid, she paid what?
So this is the one where her car was towed at 6:00 in the morning, and the notice at 7:00 in the morning, I thought this is the one. The notice at 7:00. And so she was towed. And, um, I don't know whether, did she appeal the ticket? That's what I don't know.
She got, she had, I believe, if I remember correctly, she, her ticket was forgiven, um, but there's still the towing charge, um, that she was charged. The company, I can't remember the name of the company, um, but the company has not been responsive to her, and she's been after anyone who listened in the city with, with good reason, um, to, to try to get her money back for what she paid to have her car...
Yeah, it was Bannon, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Yeah, this is the one. Um, so if her ticket was relieved, if she was, if that was waived, then what we can do is we pay her out, out of the account that we have, and then Ray will deduct it from her bill.
Okay.
What, what if the ticket wasn't forgiven?
You can make a conditional on me checking tomorrow morning.
So I move, I move that we conditionally pay.
So Counselor Cohen moves that we pay conditional upon, it's upon the, the fact that her ticket was, was, um, was waived. Okay.
But, but, I have a problem with this. What if she paid the ticket because she thought she had to, to get her car back?
Then I can report back to you. I don't think she did. Because the dollar amount is 195, and it would have been over that.
I also feel like if the car was towed at 6:00 AM...
Yeah.
The, the sign says 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So I think, I'm, I'm fine with conditionally paying it because I, even on my street, when they come down and they beep their stuff, they don't tag or tow anyone until after 7:00, usually.
So the motion from Counselor Cohen is to pay it?
Conditionally pay.
Pay it conditionally.
I'm questioning the conditional.
The conditional?
I think we should just pay it. I think we should just pay it.
Okay, I move to pay it.
If, if the ticket said it was towed before 7:00 in the morning, then we should just pay it.
Okay, move to pay.
Okay, thank you.
And so in this case, just as, just for clarity, we do a best effort to get the contractor to pay. If they won't, then we take action for, on behalf of the resident and then bill the contractor. Okay, motion to pay, um, from Counselor Cohen. Second by Counselor Murcell. All is in favor? Three hands, including my own. This is a move to be paid.
Um, the next one is, um, one of our employees has alleged that there was rust that came out of a pipe at the Mean Museum Place Garage and damaged his vehicle. Uh, Maya did their due diligence and concluded there was insufficient evidence that that was what caused the damage to the car. Um, they're recommending that it be denied.
Motion to deny.
Counselor Murcell moves to deny. Second by Counselor Cohen. All those in favor? I see three hands, including my own.
Um, the next one is a claim, there were two claims for this one, um, with respect to a tree. A tree fell down, branches fell down, damaged defense. The city came in, took the tree down, and damaged the fence again. So Maya is still reviewing this, and they will be paying out on this claim.
Move to keep this in committee.
You said Maya will, will be paying it, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to keep it in committee?
Keep it in committee so you can discharge it next time, yeah.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Murcell moves to leave in committee. Second by Counselor Cohen. All is in favor? I see three hands, plus my own.
Number 301, a city tree fell on top of her car. Maya investigated this, found that there was no notice that the tree was defective, and recommends denial. They denied.
So no prior issues here? Any motions?
Where was this? Do you know where it was?
Yeah.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah, 301.
I mean, how, who's going to park under a branch that's going to, just like tick out the whole roof, pretty much?
Well, um, it's difficult to say. The claimant doesn't have the street address on the claim. Doesn't appear that there was the, English is the first language. Um, it must have been on Ray's report, which I don't have.
Move to keep in committee.
Yeah, that sounds...
Second.
Second by, move to leave in committee from Counselor Cohen. Second by Counselor Murcell. All is in favor? See three hands, including my own.
So I'll get Ray's report. Okay. Uh, the next claim is 345. Gentleman hit in Ammerdillo on Fort Ave at night. Again, Maya denied, no notice of defect.
Move to deny.
Counselor Murcell moves to deny. Second by Counselor Cohen. All those in favor? I see three hands, including my own.
Now, we have several, um, that I'm recommending discharge because Maya paid them. Number 348, 347, 343, 369, and 394.
Move to discharge.
Move to discharge the entire group. Second by Counselor Cohen. Uh, all is in favor? See three hands, including my own.
Uh, the last one is 393. This was a ticket in tow on Lafayette Street. Um, I did speak with Alan at the parking garage about this one. Um, they failed to appeal the ticket, and our practice has been that we deny, um, the claim for the tow if they did not exercise their right to appeal the ticket.
Move to deny.
Second.
Counselor Cohen moves to deny. Second by Counselor Murcell. All is in favor? See three hands, including my own. It's denied. All right, uh, one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we send these, do we motion to send these to, I don't know if it matters, but to send these to the council as, as recommended, but either way, motion to adjourn. Uh, by Counselor Murcell. Second by Counselor Cohen. All is in favor? We are adjourned.